So, welcome to the first board prayer for the 2020-2021 school year. The focus for Catholic Education Week of May 2021 is nurturing hope. As a Saskatchewan girl, I deeply appreciate the image of the plant in the left corner of the logo. Because it's just, growing and harvesting are just part of such a major sector of how we imagine things. And so, the whole image of nurturing hope is an important one as we move through a more unique year than we've experienced for a while. Every year is unique. This one is just special in its own way. So, we begin. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen.
God of faithful journeys, you promise us that we are your people, and you are our God. Remind us of your presence as we begin a new school year, building on our strengths and our commitment to serve. Bless us with the courage we need to respond to your callings in our lives. Amen.
Amen.
We now attend to God's most holy word.
A reading from the Gospel of Matthew. As he walked by the Sea of Galilee, he saw two brothers, Simon, who is called Peter, and Andrew, his brother, casting an edent into the sea, for they were fishermen. And he said to them, "Follow me, and I will make you fish for people." Immediately, they left their nets and followed him. As he went from there, he saw two brothers, James, son of Zebedee, and his brother John, in the boat with their father Zebedee, mending their nets, and he called them. Immediately, they left the boat and their father and followed him. Jesus went throughout Galilee, teaching in their synagogues and proclaiming the good news of the kingdom, and curing every disease and every sickness among the people. So his fame spread throughout all Syria, and they brought to him all the sick, those who were afflicted with various diseases and pains, demoniacs, epileptics, and paralytics. And he cured them. And great crowds followed him from Galilee to Decapolis, Jerusalem, Judea, and from beyond the Jordan. When Jesus saw the crowds, he went up to the mountain, and after he sat down, his disciples came to him. Then he began to speak and taught them, saying the Gospel of the Lord.
Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ. I remember sometimes when people are encouraging others who are making decisions, we often say to them, "Slow down, think about it, don't do anything rash." So when I found this commentary in relationship to this reading, it really grabbed my attention. So I share this brief reflection with you. The opening scene of Jesus's ministry after his baptism is all action. He walks, calls, teaches, proclaims, cures, hikes, sits down, and speaks. If you are going to follow, you have to get up and get going, even if you are in the middle of something. In this gospel passage, it seems that if you don't follow immediately, you are going to miss it. You won't hear his teaching, or witness him cure the sick, or see the great crowds coming, or finally sit at his feet to listen. And so we pray that we are able to respond, that we are listening, like the first disciples, to God's call in our lives. God calls us in many ways, every day, to bring the good news to the world. We are called by the God who created us.
Help us to listen to your callings, God.
We are called to particular kinds of work and relationships.
Help us to hear your call in what we do and the people we journey with.
We are called as the people we are, with our gifts, talents, and resources.
Help us to see your call in our own beauty.
We are called in a variety of circumstances, whether joyful or difficult.
Help us to hear your call on the fun and hard days.
We are called from difficult situations or times of transitions.
Help us to listen to your voice guiding us.
Guiding us through life's challenges.
We are called through the example, invitation, or mentoring of other people.
Help us to hear you in the voices and actions of others.
We are called for the service of others.
Help us to be brave and put others before ourselves when possible.
We are called within the life of God, who is love.
Thank you, oh Creator God, for your faithful love and essence.
At this time, we are going to invite Julia and Max, if they dare, to have their candle lit and their camera and microphones on as we move through their annual commissioning service. Julia and Max?
Yep.
Are you willing to be a joyful messenger of God's compassion and forgiveness to your school, your parish, and your local community?
Yes, I am.
Are you willing to continue to grow in faith and to nurture your life with prayer?
Yes, I am.
Are you willing to work in a spirit of cooperation and mutual respect with the trustees of the Canora Catholic District School Board and with the young people that you represent?
Yes, I am.
Take it away.
I, Max, as a Catholic student trustee, declare my belief in the importance of the Catholic school as a community of faith, compassion, and mercy and forgiveness. I declare my commitment to bring Christian leadership to my student colleagues and to strive daily to live the values and teachings of Jesus Christ.
KCDSB trustees and Director Hayne, do you promise to support and encourage Julia and Max as they serve with you?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Julia and Max, I may not have heard Julia's voice, but I'm pretty sure she's there. Through this ministry, you share in the Church's mission of Catholic education. May your efforts bring compassion to others as you provide servant leadership in your school, parish, and local community. Amen. You're signed up again, Julia and Max. You're in. Our focus for Catholic Ed Week this year is an important one, nurturing hope. We pray one of the Catholic Education Week prayers. God of ocean depths and mountain heights, we are filled with awe as we contemplate the beauty and diversity of the world you have entrusted to us. Each of your creatures, large and small, reflects you in a marvelous way, inviting us to praise your goodness and love. As we look toward the future, may we never cease to wonder at the world you have made, and especially the richness of our human family. May our hearts be rooted in your love and our minds be anchored in hope through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Saint Louis.
Praise for us.
Praise for us. Saint John.
Praise for us.
Saint John Paul II.
Praise for us.
Saint Marguerite Bourgeois.
Praise for us.
Saint Thomas Aquinas.
Praise for us.
And all holy men and women of God.
Praise for us.
We close our prayer in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen. Have a great meeting, everyone. Thanks, Maryette.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maryette, once again, for a wonderful prayer service. And welcome back, Julia.
I don't know if it's just my end, but we can't hear Teresa.
I can't hear her.
I can't hear her either.
I can't either.
Okay.
Uh-oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, now.
Oh, no. Okay, I'll start over. I said thank you very much to Maryette for another wonderful prayer service. And I want to welcome back Julia and welcome Max to his first of two years. And we are going to be looking forward to your first student trustee report this evening later on. So, roll call. All trustees are present. Number four is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any hearing or seeing? None. We'll move on. To number five, so this is an amended agenda. We have an addition of item 10.6.1, the proposed name and logo for Canora Catholics Virtual School. So Trina, if I could please have that motion?
That the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, moved by?
I move.
Mike Favreau, seconded by Paul Angie. Okay, and all in favor? And that's great. All in favor. Number six, confirmation of minutes. The first one is not found on page one in the board book. So, the recommendation, please, Trina.
That the minutes of the regular board meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of June 16, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by?
I move.
And seconded by Jeff. And any opposed? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next recommendation. That's on page eight.
And if I could just interject for a second, if we could have Maryette, please stop sharing her screen. That would be wonderful.
Thanks.
Okay, and the recommendation is that the minutes of the special board meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of June 24, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by Mike Favreau, seconded by? Oh, sorry, Vaughn beat you too. With his hand up. Okay, and any opposed? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next recommendation on page 12, please, Trina.
That the minutes of the special board meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of July 15, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by Frances Stoney, seconded by Ann Sweeney. Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Okay. Number eight, delegations and presentations, 8.1. We have our return to school plan. Derek, please.
And thank you, Madam Chair. The return to school plan has been published, and thanks to all of the contributors. We've had a smooth start as a result of the good planning that everybody has done. Just a couple of notes, late-breaking changes, as it were. The Fire Marshal's Office has given us some additional information on fire drills. And so, they've altered the interpretation, but they've given a clear interpretation of total evacuation. So, in a nutshell, they've allowed schools to conduct fire drills in a way that respects physical distancing. And this still adheres to the act. And we can do that in a safe way, practice our six fire drills as we're supposed to. In addition, the Fire Marshal's Office gave some clarity about alcohol-based hand sanitizer at entrances. And the Fire Marshal's Office has said that individual dispensers at entrances are acceptable. It's just there should not be any greater storage of alcohol-based sanitizer at entrances. And so all of our schools are adhering to this. So, all in all, it's been a very smooth start. And I thank parents for preparing students so well, and our staff at schools for their excellent work in ensuring a safe and excellent start. And of course, to our students who have done such excellent work in what is a starting year of a school year. So thank you, Madam Chair. If there are any further questions about school startup, I'd be pleased to take those at this time.
Thank you, Derek trustees. Any questions for the director? I see none, so we're good. Thank you. It's been very thorough and good so far. 8.2, virtual learning schools and Minister Lecce's visit. I believe we have Mark, Jared, and Lori with us. The floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. So between Jared and I, Lori wasn't able to make it tonight. But if you guys don't mind, I'm going to steal the screen here just to kind of give you a little bit of a slideshow so I stay or we stay a little bit more organized here. I just got to figure this out. So, here we go. So I guess the first order of kind of conversation, I guess, would be looking at all these beautiful logos that we have come up with. So, let me see if I can make this bigger somehow. And so, I think it was mentioned earlier, or if it wasn't already, we have kind of, we have these six logos that have been graciously put together in the last couple of days to bring up the idea of our new school name for the virtual school, which we have come up as an idea to call it Saint Isidore Virtual School after Saint Isidore of Seville, who happens to be the patron saint of the Internet and technology. So this is kind of a bit of a sneak peek at the six logos. Can you, everybody see the bottom right logo? I have a little minimized screen, but I'm not sure if you guys see that as well.
Yeah, we can see them.
Okay. So these are the six logos that have been proposed. And so, our plan is to, if Saint Isidore Virtual School is kind of passed as a viable virtual school name, we're going to ask the school community, or virtual school community, which logo they prefer as kind of an effort to kind of build a relationship and build community with some of the people in our school. So, these logos, each six of them, kind of incorporate a couple of different things. First and foremost, they kind of reflect our Catholic values as a Catholic board. That's going to be the center pillar of everything we do in each of our schools. And so we wanted to make sure that was a key component of our logo going forward. And so, that was definitely something that we had in mind. And so if I flip backwards here, you can see that the cross is one of the main pillars, the main key focuses of each of these logos. And so, the next thing that we wanted to make sure that we included was kind of creating our own identity as a virtual school. But at the same time, we thought it important to recognize that the students that are involved in our school, that are our learners, come from our existing schools. So, Saint Thomas Aquinas, Saint Louis, Saint John's, PJP, Saint Pope John Paul II, as well as Saint Marguerite Bourgeois. We took colors from each of their school identities and incorporated it into our own logo. So again, if I flash back here, we can see that the logos, each, all six of them, have a variety of different colors composing our other schools, a family of schools in the Canora Catholic Board. And so lastly, we wanted to kind of give it a unique identity. And so we kind of identified Saint Isidore as an excellent patron saint to kind of name our school after, or as this saint is kind of the patron of computers and technology. And so with those three things in mind, we have come up with these six logos as our kind of starting point, something that we can pick from. And so from top and bottom, we can see that they're very similar in effect, other than the bottom ones have a circle around it and the top ones don't have the circle. So these are kind of what we're suggesting for our future logo. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that?
Trustees? No, no, we like the idea that it's, the logo should be chosen by the Saint Isidore community.
Okay, so?
Frank, I'm sorry. Mark, Jeff? Mark, Frank.
Just a little, just a little slow in getting that hand up there.
That's okay.
I just wanted to say that I really like all the elements that have gone into the logo and the name. And a great job done by everybody involved.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, so I'll let Jared take over at this point.
Okay, so in terms of our school leadership, we are lucky to have Paul White acting as our principal. I am taking on the role of the elementary vice principal, covering the kindergarten through grade eight students. And then Mark is overseeing our secondary program, with students taking a large variety of courses at the secondary level, which Mark will look forward here, and we'll get more into the details there.
So this is kind of what we're looking at for secondary staffing and enrollment. So at this point, as of this afternoon, we had 57 students, which is made up of three dedicated classroom teachers with some additional support through coordinators and other people in different schools. So the three dedicated teachers are basically the ones who are teaching the majority of the courses. And we also have supplemented this kind of, these dedicated teachers with some help from a variety of different places. So what we've tried to do is mimic the Saint Thomas Aquinas High School's calendar as much as possible by picking most of the compulsories, picking courses that are going to get these students into a place where they can be successful after this year. And so between those three teachers and everybody else who's helping, we've been able to kind of meet those needs. So along those lines, we also have hired, or in the process of hiring, a learning resource teacher who's going to help with some of the special education needs of our students. And we are also in the process of assigning a supply teacher who is going to be looking after primarily our virtual students. And so, there's unique needs when it comes to online learning as far as logins and familiarity with some of the platforms. And so we thought it prudent to have a supply teacher that is designated specifically for these students and for these classes so that it's a streamlined process and we don't have a new person coming in each and every time. So that's kind of what we're looking at for our secondary schools. Jared can speak to the elementary?
One second. Oh, sorry. Frank had a question there, Mark, so maybe?
Yeah, just of the 57 secondary students, how many are in their final year of high school?
Very few. I don't have that number to quote me on, but I believe it's around six students.
Okay.
So very few.
Thanks. Sorry, go ahead, Jared.
No problem. At the elementary level, so from K to 8, we currently have 121 students. Those students are coming from all of our elementary schools, but also encompassing the seven and eight students from Saint Thomas Aquinas. The number is growing, and we're hearing positive things. And everyone who has been joining has been saying that they've heard already that things are going well. At this point, we have seven dedicated teachers in our elementary program. We are attaining a .5 special education resource teacher who will support, like Mark said, with all of our students who have special education needs.
Okay.
Sorry, my mic was off. Everybody can hear me hopefully now. So this is kind of an example of the secondary school, so it's pretty simple. It is mimicking 100% what students will see at Saint Thomas Aquinas, where they have a period in the morning and they have a period in the afternoon following the quadmaster system. And so, basically what that means is that students will take their first period for six weeks approximately, where they have the same class in the morning, all morning, for approximately two and a half hours. They would then have a lunch, just that is typical to any year at Saint Thomas Aquinas. And then after lunch, they would have a second period class that would go again for six or seven weeks. And it would all be the same class, so two and a half hours in the same class, same teacher. And so, we would cycle through this quadmaster system. So if we want to call that the first quadmaster, it would cycle through four different quadmasters. So our virtual school reflects exactly what's happening in our high schools. Does anybody have any questions about how that is working? Okay, great. I'll flip that one.
Okay, and to speak to the elementary schedule, on the screen there are two homeroom class examples of what a typical day would look like for a student in our program. So knowing that the students are sitting in their own homes or in a family member's home to participate in their learning activities, the day does still follow the same routine that a student would follow should they be attending in one of our physical schools. It also allows for movement breaks, a lunch break. And we also do have movement between some of the teachers. So our students are still participating in second language programming, whether it be French as a second language or the native second language program. We also have built into these schedules opportunity for all of our French immersion students to get their French language requirements through the virtual program.
Okay, so the next thing that we'll discuss briefly is going to be our visit with Minister Lecce that happened last week. And so as you can see here, this is just a screenshot of that conversation that Minister Lecce actually put on his Twitter account. So I actually just kind of borrowed it off of there. So as you can see, this is both a snapshot of what happened with our minister's visit as well as kind of a snapshot into what virtual learning looks like for our students. And so much to the interface that we're on right now in Microsoft Teams, our students would join classes much similar to this, where each, the teacher and their peers would show up in screens similar if their mic was on and their camera was activated. And the class would kind of operate in much a similar way as a typical classroom. Questions would be asked, the teacher would give some sort of instruction, and you would kind of have that same ebb and flow of a regular physical classroom. I mean, other than being obviously through a virtual interface, other than everybody being in the same room. And so, I have a couple of snippets of video here that I will play just from the meeting that we had with Minister Lecce. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll go ahead and play this video. Does anybody have anything to ask right now?
Hmm, no.
Okay, the only thing that I need to make sure is? Okay, the only thing that I need to make sure is that the system audio is shared. So I'm going to hit play, and if anybody can't hear what's going on, just let me know sooner than later. That would be great.
Nothing.
Can't hear.
Okay, let me try to rectify that here.
Oh, Frank, you have a question?
Just a comment, Madam Chair, while Mark is doing that. As you know, I sent out some meeting notes from our OCSTA Board of Directors meeting that we had on on Friday. And the minister was able to join our meeting as well on Friday. I think it's the first time that a minister has joined a board of directors meeting, according to our president anyway. And so during that meeting, I had the opportunity not only to ask a question of the minister, but also on behalf of everyone at Canora Catholic thanked him for taking the time to be available with our online class last Wednesday. So just thought I'd share that with you, that I did take the opportunity. And he again reiterated his pleasure to be able to do that, so thought I'd share that with you.
Well, thanks, Frank.
So I think I have it up and running here. Again, let me know if it doesn't work. You guys hear that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's try that one more time then.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Oh, one sec.
What?
Pardon?
Teresa, is it okay if Mark proceeds with the video?
Yes, please, go ahead. Yeah.
What changes have you had to make in how you work every day since the pandemic?
Yeah, I I must admit, I never worked from home before, almost ever. I'm like, I love my old school, I just sort of like to be in my office. You know, it's sort of, when I was in university, I went to Western for my first degree. And I sort of liked to study like at the library, like a big library that most universities have it. I don't know why, but it just put me into that sort of academic setting. So I've had to, obviously, I've had to work from home, and we all had to work from home, to learn from home and make that change. But that was for me was a bit of, was a bit of a big change in my life because I really did sort of get up, go into the office sort of seven AM or whatever it was, full days of, you know, twelve, fourteen hours, and then try to leave my work at work. And then when I'm done work, it was like eight o'clock, nine o'clock, and I then I'd go home. And I and I used to think that's a smart way of sort of compartmentalizing my life. Like I don't mind working late and the night, but due to work, so when I go home, it's home time. So I make dinner and I go and talk to my family and do whatever, read a book, watch television, watch a show. And given this, this is just crazy, the last few months have been, and the changes. I sort of, I'm finding the like my personal life, which was very limited before and COVID for the record. The social side was really blending with the professionals. So, you know, you're at home and I've got work all over my kitchen table. So you're almost always in a, in a way, I know many people have said it's been amazing to find that balance, and most people has, and I'm really happy. And I am, and I found a bit of that balance, but I'm still trying to figure out how to sort of, it's my kitchen, my workplace, and my family room, like I'm trying to make that transition personally. We're all going to go through that, we're going to have to make some changes of adjustment and comfort. But I've been working from home, that's been a big change for me at the beginning of pandemic. Now that obviously the last few months, as we've gone through the stages, we're a bit, you know, we've gotten a bit better, I've returned to work physically. But yeah, it's been a change. And the other thing is just the use of video technology. Like, I mean, I'm thirty three, I'm about the oldest Ministry of Education in our province's history. But, you know, I didn't do that much soup. I didn't do that much, you know, I think right now we're on, we're on go, we're on freedom of the speech. Like I never did that. I mean, I did the odd one, but you know, it's a new person. So I mean, there's been a lot of technology that's been used in today, which has been helpful. It also allows things like this, which are sort of cool that, you know, I'm not sure we would have done a lot of them if it wasn't for this. So in some respects, you know, my my life is, well, in all respects, our lives have changed. But in some respects, it's actually gotten even more efficient and a bit more connected with people I haven't seen. You know, I used to call people on the phone, even my friends, and now there's a bit more video based, you know, and it's just, it adds a bit of a dimension of humanizing that experience. So yeah, lots of change. How about you? Tell me a bit about your, how your life decided to make a bit of change in the six years.
Well, for work, just wearing a mask, haven't, I haven't gone to work for a while. And once everything started opening up, wear a mask, plexiglass, hand sanitizer. Since the pandemic, which was in March, we had to do online school, which I actually found more helpful for me.
Really?
Because I like to work by myself rather than surrounded by people. But it, that hasn't changed that much for me.
Awesome. And you worked through the pandemic?
A bit, yeah.
Wow, that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
A bit of courage, but you know, we, a lot of, and I know a lot of people, young people, students, et cetera, they were doing that. I know, I live at my local grocery store. I used to see two students who I constantly know just because I always go to see a lot of them. And they worked pretty much from, unless mentioning from Bay onwards.
So that was a bit of a snippet. That was a couple of minutes long. The he was in there for probably close to forty minutes. I believe I have one more video of him speaking with us here.
Express my absolute confidence in everyone. I know this has been a pretty tough, unpredictable, time to, you know, a bit scary, you know, challenges we respond to in the province, in the country, the context of our health, the pandemic, the recession, so much happening. And, you know, our country, you know, as all of you students of history will know, our country has faced, our peoples over a hundred and fifty years have faced adversity, we faced obstacles. This may be a unique one, and I would argue it's a year to remember, it's for the history books. But I also really believe in one of the best enduring truths, one of the enduring realities of our country. So we have, when we work together, when we come together, we've overcome every challenge, from some of the greatest, you know, environmental to existential to war. I mean, in some of the biggest challenges of our country and defining issues of our country, we've overcome them through unity, and I think that's really an important message. And I, I'm really grateful to young people, you know, who are reading by example. I, you know, my biography is like always awkward when someone reads your bio. But I think one thing that maybe is modestly interesting is I also happen to be the youngest Minister of Education in the province and I believe the country's history. And I think it's important that young people know, wherever you stand on whatever issues and parties, and I might even talk about that, just to know that, you know, we need young people to step up and step forward and lead in any way, however you define leadership in your heart, in your, you know, in your own path and career, being in administration, in education, in government, in the legal system, in law and order. In every area of human endeavor, I want to make sure that you know that for someone like me, who's, I came with immigrant parents, my mom and dad can speak the local English, can speak any of our national languages, and didn't have any money, but they just had the greatest currency note, which is hard work and hope. And obviously allowed me to be a consistent employee like the past minister. But with that, I really wanted to just get perspective from you on how you are enjoying this, your orientation, tolerance, and maybe if anyone wants to speak, and if you're comfortable, I don't want to put you at this spot, even just if you've done this before. I mean, I'd be curious if like a show of hands, because this is maybe one way I could do this without creating a very distracted intervention for all of us. How many of us have done some form of online or remote learning in years past? Okay, so a few, a few, okay, a few of you, not all of you. And so I'm curious to know, just from maybe some of the students who are participating the first time, why you made that decision, or your family made that decision? And remind me, how many, how early are we into the course?
So yeah, that was just a couple of, whoops, that was a couple of snippets from from his visit. If anybody wants to see the full length video, we have it somewhere, so just reach out and we'll be able to connect you with that.
I'll see.
But yeah, so that was kind of, that was cool. And speaking with some of the students after, it was, it was a neat experience for them, I'm sure. If they didn't know who Minister Leche was before the meeting, they definitely looked into him afterwards. And then even after later, I spoke with some of them, and they said it was kind of cool to have that experience to to meet somebody who has that much influence and and, you know, a politician and all that stuff. So it was a pretty cool experience for for our students to be able to participate in. So yeah, I'd just like to open it up. Does anybody have any questions about Minister Leche's visit or with the secondary virtual school, or that Jared can answer with the elementary virtual school, or with the logos? Or did you maybe want to see them again?
Trustees? I I can't see all of you, so maybe if you raise your hand, it'll show up on my screen. Any questions or comments to Mark or Jared? Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Question that I have is with regards to, has there been any hiccups? Obviously, you just started it for the last week or two. And have you been able to overcome those hiccups that have been there?
Jared, do you want to take that one?
Sorry, I only heard a little bit of it there. It was cutting out on my end. Can you repeat the question?
Can you repeat the question? Jared, can you hear Paul?
Just barely for some reason. I'm not sure what's going on.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, okay, so basically he just wants to know how it's going. Has there been any hiccups? Yeah.
So from my perspective, things have been.
Can you hear me now?
Positive, and I can hear you now, yeah. Things have gone well. We definitely.
I can't hear their response.
Sorry?
Oh, just a little glitch there. Paul's.
Got it, no.
He's got it.
Okay, so overall, I think things have been going pretty smooth. We definitely are experiencing a learning curve from the staff side of things as well as the student side of things. And a major part of that is a learning curve for the parents, being pretty heavily involved with the the whole program and and the learning at home, especially for our very young students at home. We do have a significant amount of students who are in the early elementary stages. And from the first two days being wrapped up now, the parents are are really doing their best to engage their students and or their children to be participants in their classrooms. So I think that things are, things are looking up, and it's going to be a bit of an uphill battle. But we will get there, and high hopes for the whole program.
Any other questions? No. Well, I I just want to thank you for your presentations, for trying your best to teach all our kids virtually, and good luck. Because wow, it's going to be tough teaching the youngest ones virtually. I don't know how you get them to sit still for that long. Okay, great, thank you.
On the other end of the camera.
Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, eight point three, summer learning program. Hillary, please, Hillary.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Hillary.
There I am. Okay, I'm just going to share my screen with you. There we are. Okay, so can everyone see my screen?
I believe so.
Perfect. Okay, so this year's summer learning theme was keep the learning going. So as you all may know, it was our first ever virtual summer learning program. The ministry decided fairly early on that they were going to go completely virtual for the summer learning. There was talk of doing some hybrid models, but there was just too much uncertainty. So they decided to go completely virtual, which, as you know, has its challenges, especially when offering some summer programming. Kids had already had lots of virtual learning experience from March till June. So we weren't sure how it was going to be received, but we were determined to make it work. And so here's a little bit about how it went. So I'm just going to go back here just for a bit. We had surprisingly over eighty registrations for summer learning, which I was amazed for the reasons I already mentioned, being virtual. So obviously, throughout the three weeks, we had not all of the eighty participate. In fact, I would say about twenty percent ended up not participating or participating very infrequently. But we still had about sixty, just over sixty participants who were actively engaged in the program. So that was super exciting for me. So starting up was challenging, getting everyone's Google Classroom set up. The teachers were very, very good about getting that set up. But getting the parents on it and signing in and usernames and passwords, all of that was a bit of a challenge at first. And we did end up spending a lot of time supporting parents getting online. But we did it and made it through, and we were able to carry on. So we had four classes in our virtual summer learning. So we had two primary classes, a junior class and, sorry, two junior classes. So we were actually only funded for two classes. But the ministry offered some extra funding for grades six through eight. So we were able to offer an extra six to eight class. And the board wanted to support French immersion class as well. So we were able to offer a French immersion class, a K to two class for that as well. So that was really exciting. We had really great teaching teams. We were also able to hire an extra educational assistant. So each class had one educational assistant. We were able to hire another one to support all of the classes, but more so the grades three to five class, as they had the largest number of participants. So it was all kinds of interactive learning. So you can see from this slide, the PowerPoint presentation was set up. And each of the items on the screen is linked to an interactive web tool that the students had access to. So there were some pretty phenomenal things that were happening, and the learning was was amazing. And I was so excited to see all of the student engagement that was going on. I was a co-teacher in all of the educators' classrooms, so I was able to jump in and out of the classrooms on a daily basis. So I could have a sneak peek to see what was going on in in each of the classes every day. There was lots of hands-on learning, so it wasn't just sitting in front of a screen for three hours. There were activities that were suggested and supported. And so you'll see as we we go on, there was lots of different stuff that was made. So here, one of our learners is experimenting with colors and so doing a little science experiment. This little guy was in our Miss Adams class. He was in grade two, I believe. And yeah, so that was his color experiment. So there were lots of, again, hands-on activities. This one, Madame Murray did baking, so it was teaching fractions with baking. And so she had guardians and the students work together in the kitchen. And it was all synchronous learning, all done through Google Meet. And we all made beach sugar. Um, and we all made beach sugar cookies, um, which were quite delicious. It was just great to see how all of the teachers integrated all of the subjects into some really cool, um, experiential learning. So we had the help of, um, some web tools. So reading A to Z was one of the tools, uh, teachers were able to use. And so they could choose a particular book, um, based on the theme, the level, um, whatever was going on in the class, and they could assign that particular book to the kids. They could read it with them, um, over, uh, the Google Meets. Um, and we were also able to use this tool. Our EAs, um, were scheduled to do one-on-one meetings, uh, with each of our learners to, um, target some, um, specific interventions. And so each of our learners got at least two, if not three or more, uh, one-on-one sessions, um, either reading or math, um, with our EAs, um, and some of our teachers as well. So that was exciting. So here's a, a web tool called Book Widgets. And, um, this teacher used Book Widgets to, um, enhance their oral learning, um, oral language in the classroom. So this was, um, Madame Murray's grade K to two class, um, that she, uh, used lots of different, uh, bingos and games that she incorporated in her class to work on vocabulary. So there, we wanted to include, um, some healthy living and movement activities throughout the course of the kids' day. Um, so there was lots of Go Noodle and virtual dance parties incorporated, um, as well as outside time. Um, and, uh, to involve parents as well in some healthy, healthy living with their, with their children. So there, I don't want to say it was all completely technology, um, web tools and what have you. Um, all of the schools were very gracious in opening their doors and letting the educators come and look through resources. So these books are from the Pope John Paul Library. Um, and the grade three to five teacher, um, did, uh, a, a theme, kind of a unit on, um, plants. And, uh, we were able to deliver packages to each of our students. Um, and in this class, they, um, each received a package of, uh, a cup and some seeds and soil. Um, and together as a class, online, they did some, some gardening and learned about, uh, plants. So the grades six through eight, um, they did some coding. So we had partnered with Science North, so our, through our experiential learning lead, um, Ms. Melanchenko. Um, we were able to get, uh, a package of, um, sessions with Science North. And many of the sessions, including coding. So the grades three through eight, uh, did several lessons on coding and were able to develop their own little video games, um, as well as incorporate, uh, some of the coding into their math and language as well. So that was really exciting. Uh, there's a little emoji graph that was used. Um, so yeah, our, the Science North partnership was great and really well received. There were live experiments, um, uh, that were done every Friday. So we had three large, um, sessions, live experiments. Um, weekly, uh, the kids had ask a scientist question and answer period, where they would spend between 20 minutes and half an hour, um, with the, uh, scientist in a particular domain, and they were able to ask questions. And there were group activities, um, such as the coding that I mentioned before. So that was really well received. Um, if, I highly recommend it. If we, um, ever have to go virtual summer learning again, it was, uh, an amazing experience. So our experiential learning lead, Ms. Mel, was an active participant in our summer learning as well. She did some dancing sessions with, um, one of our K to two classes, and that was really well received. So another great partnership there. Um, so of course, this wasn't all just for nothing. There was some assessment involved, um, for, of, and as learning. Um, so, uh, we were able to, um, in cooperation with, uh, Steph Sweetie. She was a big helping getting our D2L portfolio set up. So what you see here is a child on an iPad with the Funster app. And the Funster app is basically, um, uh, an app that allows the students to document their learning. And it's a really, really user-friendly way to be able to, um, take snapshots of whatever the, the kids are doing or learning, and it saves it directly into their portfolio. So that was a great way to, to document learning and to track progress of the students from the beginning of their summer learning experience right to the end. Um, also, all of the students who, uh, participated consistently ended with a summer learning report card. So of course, this wasn't, uh, a full-on report card, but it gave the students and parents a good idea of, um, what was worked on, what went really well, and some next steps as well. Um, these report cards are also going to be sent to, um, the homeroom teachers of those children. So they are able to have a, a starting point, um, of where the, where the kids, uh, were learning and, um, how their progress was tracked. So for the most part, um, we had some really great feedback. Of course, you can't please everyone all the time, but, um, the feedback overall, uh, was very, very positive. Um, we had some, uh, parents comment how their, their children really excelled with all the synchronous learning. Um, the feedback they received from their teachers, uh, it was, uh, a really good experience. So it was, um, not ideal, um, for a summer learning program, but we definitely made the best of it. And I'm super proud of, um, all of the teachers and, uh, support staff, as well as all the students that participated. It was a, a busy but great three weeks. So thank you, KCDSB.
Thanks, Hillary. Uh, trustees, any questions for Hillary? Um, someone, oh, Paul.
There, I think I got it this time. Uh, Hillary, um, you were kind of surprised, I think, of, of the number of students, 80. What were you kind of figuring? And how does this compare to previous years?
So I can't speak for last year, um, but the year before, I was the administrator. Um, and we had, um, for in-person, we had three classes. Um, and it ranged from, I would say, maybe eight to 10 learners, all the way to 25 learners. So, um, in each class. Um, so comparatively speaking, I thought, um, the 80 that, um, signed up and showed an interest in doing more virtual learning after months and months of it, I thought that was pretty impressive. So, and especially even though there weren't 80 that were fully engaged for the entire three weeks, even, um, you know, 60, 65, I thought that was a, a very good participation level. So.
Anyone else, uh, questions? No. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. That was very interesting. And it's great to see, uh, other, like, Science North was there, which is super great. Thank you so much, Hillary.
Thank you.
Okay. 8.4, Student Trustee Report. Julia and Max, you're on.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, here we go. Max, can you hear me?
Yep, we're all good. Yep.
Okay. Good evening, trustees, Director of Education, Superintending, Coordinators, and System Leaders. We hope that you all enjoyed the summer, spending time with your family, and making the best of our predicament. Although we have not had what we consider a normal beginning to the school year, everyone is excited to make new memories and add a new chapter to their book of life. I'm very excited to introduce Max Brays, who will be joining me on this year's journey. Max excels not only in academics, but in the arts and in athletics. I've heard so many good things about Max, and I am looking forward to working with him over the next year. We are both honored to be the voice of the student body and represent St. Thomas Aquinas High School.
The first week back, back to school was a bit out of the ordinary. Due to safety concerns, many things have changed at STA High School. The grade seven and nine students started school on Thursday, September 3rd. Grades eight and 12 started on Friday, and the following week, grade 10s returned on Tuesday. Finally, the grade 11s returned to complete the high school atmosphere at STA. To help keep everyone safe, students are limited to the, to their cohorts. In way the school has made this possible, one way the school has made this possible is by switching to a quadmaster system. This means that students only have to attend two classes for two and a half months until their courses switch. Although this is very different from previous years, everyone is trying to make the best of the situation. Many students have mixed feelings about back, going back to school. Most people were excited to see their friends and teachers again. They were also happy to be able to leave their homes, as most have been stuck for the past six months. Nerves were also high, as risk of catching COVID-19 is still there. Everyone has been washing their hands multiple times a day and following the health and safety protocols to their best of their ability.
Unfortunately, this year's reports are going to be a bit different from last, as we are no longer able to discuss sports teams, music events, and gatherings within the school. Every day, we pray that the world can recover from the pandemic and that people can live without fear. We pray to have a school year filled with good memories made with friends and to be able to gather together as one. We continue to live every day to the fullest and wish everyone good health and a great school year. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Julia and Max. That was very good. Yes, you're right. They will be very different reports, not reporting on sports or arts or athletics. So we will see. Uh, question, are you both attending school or are you doing it virtually?
I am attending school in person.
Nice.
Me as well, yep.
Good. Great. Awesome. Uh, trustees, anything for the two student trustees? No? Okay. Great. Thank you again. Okay, we will move on now to 10 Policy Governance. 10.1, Approval of the Minutes. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the report of the Policy Governance Committee meeting of September 1st, 2020 be approved or circulated?
Moved by Vaughn, seconded by Ann Sweetie. Great. Um, any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Okay, um, we, we will move on down to 10.3 Personnel. 10.3.1, 2020 Staffing Report. Allison, I see you there. Hi.
Yes, thank you. Hi. Um, if Miranda does start getting kind of glitchy, I will turn my video off. So hopefully I do come through fairly, uh, clear. Um, so what I'm here to present is our 2020 staffing, and our staffing is, uh, still ongoing. Usually by springtime, we have most of it complete when we do our estimates. But given the circumstances of this school year, um, we're still in the process of doing some hiring. So overall, for St. Thomas Aquinas High School, uh, we have six, um, uh, long-term occasional teachers that have been hired recently. And we have 10 long-term occasional education assistants, as well, uh, we have the new principal, Nicole Kurtz up there. Um, for St. John's School in Red Lake, there are three, uh, long-term occasional teachers added to the complement, as well as five long-term occasional education assistants. For Pope John Paul II, there is a long-term occasional mental health worker, as well as a long-term occasional positive behavior support worker. They have two long-term occasional teachers and then 8.6 long-term occasional education assistants. For SMB, there are two permanent teachers who were hired there, as well as five long-term occasional teachers. And, uh, five, sorry, got distracted there. Um, as well as the new principal and vice principal, Hillary Aiken and Andrea Shikovsky at SMB. So at St. Louis School, we have 1.5 long-term occasional teachers and then four, um, long-term occasional education assistants. And as you heard earlier this evening, um, earlier this evening from, um, Mark Richards and Jared Ralco, who are the vice principals for our virtual, uh, schools. We have seven teachers at the elementary and a half learning resource teacher, as well as three teachers for the secondary and a half, uh, learning resource teacher as well. Um, and lastly, for some system positions, we have seven new custodians, which we are hiring. And this is, this is to support each school for the enhanced cleaning protocols that were in place. And then we also have our new maintenance supervisor, Jo Malilow, who joined our team in August. So that's what we have as of today, although, like I said, we are still going through the hiring process. So there'll be additional staffing, hopefully complete by the end of September. And I've got a student trustee in training here. I don't know what she's doing, guys, but.
How's school going? How's school going?
Oh.
Emily, Emily, it's Santa.
Put her on the spot. So if there's any questions about staffing, I'd be happy to take them.
Ann, is your hand up? I see it on the screen as up. No? No questions? Any questions for Allison? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the report, Allison. Great. It's been a, a long process this year. Okay. We will move to 10.3.2, Emergency Appointments. Derek, maybe you'll just speak a little bit before the recommendation?
Absolutely. I'll just get my settings set here. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you again, Madam Chair. Uh, this is a, an, or a request that the Director of Education does make every year. And, and this year of COVID, I think it's even more important, uh, that, um, we had, we do have the, that I am given the authority by the board to appoint a person who is not a teacher, uh, to, um, to, uh, fill vacancies if, uh, if it's required. So, um, Madam Chair, I believe, uh, if we could have, uh, Trina make the recommendation unless there's any questions.
Okay, I think we are used to this recommendation every year. So, um, may I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board authorized the Director of Education to invoke, as required, the Emergency Procedure Regulation 29821 to appoint a person who is not a teacher or a temporary teacher if no qualified teacher is available for a period of 10 days with the option to renew this appointment.
Moved by Vaughn, seconded by Paul. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. We'll move to, um, 10.3.3, the resignation of Brenda Osichak. Uh, and I believe you have a few words to say about Brenda's
Yes. Um, Brenda is set to retire, or she has retired, August the 31st of this year. Brenda Osichak started with the Conora Catholic District School Board as an education assistant on August 30th, 1999. Over the years, Brenda has worked as an education assistant at Mount Carmel School, Pope John Paul II School, and St. Thomas Aquinas School. During her tenure, Brenda has been involved with developing and implementing the breakfast program. Her involvement included writing grants, purchasing food, cooking, preparation, and being the loving mom of our students for many years. Brenda was a consistent volunteer with our students during the day and after school. Brenda was a consistent volunteer with our students during the day and after school. She was a regular support at the ice cream socials, open houses, and parent committee meetings. Brenda was an avid parent volunteer for our St. Thomas Aquinas Symphonic Winds and Percussion. All of this time was greatly appreciated. We want to thank Brenda for her commitment and dedication to Catholic education. We are truly going to miss her at Canora Catholic District School. Brenda will now have more time to spend with her husband, Mark, her son, Jerry, her daughter, Kayla Renee, and her two grandchildren. Congratulations, Brenda.
Thank you very much for that, Ann. Yes, Brenda will be very missed. Moved by, moved, and seconded by Mike Favreau. And any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. 10.3.4, the resignation of Ellen Renew, Paul Landry.
Helen was a popular... Just hang on a second. There we go, sorry.
We can't hear you.
You turned it off instead, Paul.
There, is that better?
I believe so, yes.
I've got everybody now? Okay, start over. Helen was a pillar at St. Marguerite Bergerot. For so long, it is hard to imagine starting a school year without her. The hallways still feel empty without her voice echoing through it gently, encouraging kids to get back outside or put away their things. She is fondly remembered as having a bark that was bigger than her bite. And despite having a voice that could be heard from one end of the school to the other, if she chose, the children all adored her. Best wishes, Helen, Helen, in your retirement.
Thank you very much for that, Paul. Yes, Ellen will be missed at SMB. May I have, mover, Paul, seconded by...
Read the recommendation first, Madam Chair.
Oh. Sure, sorry. The recommendation, please, Trina.
That the Board accept the resignation of Helen Renew for the purpose of retirement effective August 31st, 2020.
Okay, still moved by Paul and seconded by Vaughn. Any opposed? That carries. Thanks. Okay, we're getting to the end here. 10.6.1, the proposed name and logo for Canora Catholics Virtual School. May I get you to read the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board accept the recommendation to name Canora Catholics Virtual Learning School Saint Isidore Virtual School, effective immediately, and accept the three draft school logos as presented, which will be voted on by the school community.
And that is moved by Frank and seconded by Mike. And any opposed? None, that carries. Okay. We'll move down to number 11, Committee of the Whole. Recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board accept the report of the Committee of the Whole and all recommendations contained therein.
Moved by Vaughn, seconded by Jeff White. All in favor? Good, thanks. So we'll move down to future meetings, list of our policy governance and regular board Then I believe we have tomorrow the CPIC meeting here at the CEC or virtually, and Special Ed, Education Advisory Committee on September 18th here at the CEC or virtually. So far, the school council meetings will have to be scheduled, they will all be virtual. And there's future dates there. So now we will move down to number 16, Adjournment. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the meeting adjourned at 8:17 PM.
Paul Landry and Mike, oh, Jeff White. All in favor, everyone is. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.